I'll call up the common council meeting to order for Tuesday, November 14th. Mr. Peterson, will you lead us in the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Air.
Present.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Sparks.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. President, you have the floor.
Approval of the executive session memorandum from our October 24th meeting. Who to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the executive session memorandum from our October 24th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand.
What do you have?
Just raise a hand.
I don't think it was here.
Okay. You want to abstain?
I'll abstain.
Okay.
Okay.
Eight ayes, one abstention. Approval of the minutes from our October 24th meeting.
Move to approve?
Second. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our October 24th meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your... Raise a hand.
Whichever hand you can.
Nine out. Approval of the minutes from our October 30th special session. Move to approve?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our October 30th special session. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand.
Oh, yeah.
Are you abstaining? Eight ayes, one abstention. Approval of tonight's agenda.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Nine out. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I assume, Mr. Murphy, you want to go when your item's being discussed? If anybody else has one that they would like to speak, there's comment cards out there by the door and you can hand those to Ms. Lee and we'll call you up when your item is up for discussion. Council committee reports. Finance, Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance committee met November 9th. Our primary item of discussion was closeout of the dormant funds and cash balance monitoring. Caitlin Moss has done some cleanup work, which probably needed to have been done for some period of time, but there are quite a number of different funds that either needed to be closed or the money needs to be moved to different funds. I think a good example was a trail maintenance fund that had some money in it that ultimately needs to get back into the parks fund so that they can really use it for the trail maintenance. I think that goes back to the original allocation of some of the trash fund fees and that fund just kind of sat dormant. So that money's going to get moved back to parks and I think we'll see some council actions to make some of that happen. But most of it was cleanup work that needed to be done. We went through the bond closing for the tax lease rental bonds for Pleasant Street, looked at the economics of that. The total interest cost, including the underwriters' fees, was 5.02 percent, which is pretty competitive in today's world. That took out ban one and two that were related to the original funding for Pleasant Street. So those are 20-year bonds and ultimately, I think it was a $45 million issue. And with some other cash, including some of the excise taxes that we put aside, that was the offset to, along with some road impact fees that went into the bond issue. Total amount, if you include the cash that went into the transaction, was around about $60 million. So that was phases the bonds for two and three. So I think we caught the market at a decent time. 5 percent tax exempt is a reasonable rate for some lease rental bonds. So that funding is put to bed and the claims come with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. O'Connor?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the claims.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the claims. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Nine out. Moving on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 35-10-23, an ordinance adopting a change of zoning from SR Suburban Residential to R1 Low Density Single Family Residential for property at 5263 East 156th Street. Ms. Reed.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let me pull this up here really quickly. This item before you tonight is for a rezone from its original SR, which is a county zoning district, to the city's R1 district. It comes before you with a favorable recommendation of 7-3 from the plan commission with a set of architectural commitments and a schematic driveway exhibit. I confirmed this morning with engineering that they are okay with a maximum two drive cuts, which is a condition that was placed on that favorable recommendation from plan commission. The details of their site plan will be reviewed and approved through the planning and engineering departments at a future technical advisory committee meeting and they will see that during the primary plating process. Mr. Wirt is here for any questions. I also am available if you have any additional questions.
Any questions for Ms. Reed? Did council have specific questions for Mr. Wirt? Remind me last.
I believe the architectural concerns and the drive cuts were the two topics of discussion, which I believe are both addressed in the commitments that you have before you as exhibit B, I believe.
Any questions for Mr. Wirt? For council? Okay, I'll go ahead and call up Mr. Baker. Murphy, sorry. Sorry, yeah, no wonder he wasn't...
He was just sitting there like, hey!
Different.
Baker, Murphy.
Only late for supper, yeah. So, are we still three lots?
Yes.
Really? My name's Terry Murphy. I live at 5355 East 161st Street. I also own a house and property down the street on 156th Street from the petitioners. You know, sometimes you just have to say no. If you follow this, and I came to the council and started asking some questions back in August after we went to the BZA and it came loaded here with already variances for zoning that has not been accomplished, we've talked about all that. The problem that I have is bulk requirements. This area has been referred to as transitional. This area has been referred to everything other than the fact that it is a template that was set up back in 1973. This is the parcel we're talking about. This, all of these people moved in here in '76. There was nothing out there and people still want this. They're going $100,000 an acre. A year ago, well, a year and a half, May 27th, $300,000 in cash for this part, this lot. Was it too much? I don't know. All of a sudden, it's a burden. It's got to be divided into three things. Not only do we back into the barn that way, we build a house on it before we've even gone to planning commission. Now, I believe that the plan commission, which I went to all the meetings, was a frontage road for the driveways. You're talking about two driveway accesses. Can you really get a road and your offsets from the road on that narrow of a lot? 40-foot? I don't think it can be done. And the problem that I have is you open up everybody in this area. This is a three-acre parcel. These are all seven, five, some are 20. As I talked to you about before, Garan owns this. The Archdiocese is not going to sell any of this right here. This is Carter's and this is Haynes'. Those two places will develop, but the rest of this is set. Why are we jeopardizing and setting precedent on three-acre lot in an area that's been established since '76? The one nice thing about it is it's a BZA issue, so anybody who wants to get upset enough now has a path that they could use. Mike Howard never did that. He kept the city out of that because you can't sue over a zoning issue. Back in 2005, Greg, I wish that I could have had that option. You know that. I'm just telling you, this is the end of Noblesville. I'm sorry that it's 300,000 and yes, the kids are going to live next door and all of that. We're talking about perpetuity right here and we need reinforcement of bulk requirements and the original parceling in this area or you jeopardize cutting everything else up unless you want to just carve it to the boundaries of Westfield. So I ask you to decline this. And if you followed the way this has been handled, if this is your textbook of how you should handle something, there's a problem with that because in the BZA, the original thing, if you look at it, staff's recommendations, if no one remonstrates against it, then I guess it's okay. That's the last bottom line. It's been supported all the way through. I don't understand it. And I asked every one of you multiple times and nobody can tell me and I'll tell you it's wrong. And the way the BZA is being used is wrong, but this is a zoning issue and I ask you to... How's it been handled? It reflects on everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Terry. Ms. Reed?
Just a quick recap here of the process to get to this point to date. The first step we went through was the BZA. We would have been advised by our attorneys that it doesn't matter if the BZA approves first or plan commission approves first and then recommends to council. In this particular instance, it doesn't have an impact on either decision. The Board of Zoning Appeals would have to grant a variance because typically in a subdivision process, we'll, you all see these in PUDs, Plan Unit Developments. With a smaller three-acre parcel, a PUD is a very giant step for three parcels at the end result. So this takes a normal zoning process, which is to establish the need for a variance and if the variance isn't granted, there's no need whatsoever to do a rezone. So we started with the simplest and easiest piece, which is a variance. If that got denied, there's no point in moving forward. It did pass, which is why we went to plan commission then with the rezone component, which is in front of you today for your second reading and a vote. So really, it isn't, it isn't something we see very frequently. This is a unique situation because of the size, because of the location, because it is a close to infill. You'll note that these parcels will be one acre in size. The neighborhood just behind that, the acreage is much less in those lots. It's not even an acre, probably quarter of an acre or an eighth of an acre. Same with Bridgewater, which is not very far to the west from here. So we're at the rezone portion of this, which was forwarded favorably from plan commission with a 7-3 vote. After this evening, next steps would be for an annexation. These individuals would like to have sewer access. We require you to be in city limits for that. You'll also note from this image that they're very close to city limits for the size of properties that they have. And then they would go for a primary plat process, which does get approved by plan commission as well as border works.
Any questions for Ms. Reed?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'm curious, the neighborhood that's to the south of that, when was that?
Oh, man.
When was that?
That was there before me. I've been here 10 years, so I'm not exactly sure. I can try to look that up. Maybe Brian remembers.
Brian's a historian.
Ask our council historian, do you remember that?
I don't, I cannot answer that.
Okay.
I don't know if I know that.
My guess is that it was a farm land.
Joyce, do you know? Thank you.
I think it was part of farm land for many, many years and then got developed...
Yes.
...as a residential area. So while I appreciate Mr. Murphy's concerns, unfortunately, land is, is being developed and you've got certainly smaller lot sizes there versus the one acre lots. I was just curious.
So an answer to your question, this was a part, originally a part of the Noble West Plan Development. And as you recall, the Noble West Plan Development was both on the east and west sides of Hazel Del Road. This particular portion, although started out with Dries Homes building closer to Hazel Del Road, this particular section until it was purchased by Colty some years later, sat vacant for quite some time. But the actual approval of it was done in the probably 2004, 2005 time era, yeah.
Thank you very much.
I think it was done prior to 2004.
Ms. Air.
Ms. Reed, am I wrong? I think that we discussed this last meeting. There was six feet short of meeting SR requirements to put this into two lots, would be an automatic. Is that correct?
Of an SR zoning, the city doesn't have SR zoning. It's already exists as SR.
R1.
In the county zoning. R1, you mean?
R1. Aren't we changing the zoning from SR Suburban Residential to R1?
To R1. Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's within six feet of what being approved, two lots with, is R1?
I believe so.
Does that sound right?
I just wanted to comment on the process. You know, we submit, in a lot of cities that I work in, there's a deadline. You submit to the, to the staff and then they put you down a path of what's appropriate for your project. A lot of smaller communities, there is not a quorum, especially during farming season. So this gets before that and this gets after that and they operate as two independent boards. We see a lot of times at architectural review board or PUD committee, there's a member that votes yes and then when they get to the next step, they vote no because it's a whole different set of topics. I think we've even seen it here in Noblesville. A member appointed to the plan commission voted yes and then voted no at council. It's a whole new set of, it's a whole new set of situations that you look at and plant, it's zoning, it's plan commission and when you get here, it's finances and a whole lot of other things. So I feel comfortable in the way the process this is taken and I feel like remain independent and you take into account these other decisions that other bodies have been made, but now we got to look at it as council members and I feel comfortable with the steps it's taken. And then as an architect, I kind of look at this, you know, this is a transition between a really small neighborhood, smaller lots than this is and to go from a one, three-acre lot to a three, one-acre lots, still feels very much like an estate that meets the R1 zoning, which we don't have a lot of in Noblesville. I feel like this is a pretty good transition piece between the neighborhood to the south, the school and the rural nature to the north. I mean, I'm comfortable with this and I appreciate the hard work that those other bodies have done to get it here.
Mr. Boyce?
Guaranteed your point. I am liaison to planning commission and I would say that that is kind of what the majority of people on planning commission thought was that it was a good transition in between those two. So that's why the majority voted for it. I think that was, nobody was really championing, very excited about it and then there were a few that were buried against it, but for the most part, I think the majority of us were kind of like, eh, it's kind of a good. We didn't want the three driveways. We thought that would have added a little too much traffic, so that's why we cut it down to two. I do feel a lot more confident about that. I do, I feel really confident about the short term, just to give my opinion on this because I think it is going to be all one family on there from everything I've heard and that totally makes sense and I think it sounds great. Where I get a little more nervous is that's probably not always going to be the case. All families don't live together on the same lot forever, right? I mean, generations, the change and everything and so I do have some concern, but I guess that's, it can be a long ways down the road and they'll have to sell it and find something and some of that, but I do have some concerns when it comes to that because I do think that when it is one family right now, that it could, I could totally see it being three and it not being a problem, but I do have some concerns there. I'm not sure if that's anything you want to address, Sarah. I know they didn't during plan commission, but that's just kind of one of the, some of the thoughts that are rolling around in my, my brain from planning commission.
I would just say we don't regulate who, who's considered a family and who lives there. That's my, that's my little shout out for Steve over there.
I get along better with strangers than families.
You said engineering has supported this as amended?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Jim Hellman has reviewed the site plan.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we amend the ordinance as presented, ordinance 35-10-23 as presented.
There's a motion and a second to amend the ordinance, ordinance number 35-10-23 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. Eight... Do you have a statement?
No.
Yeah.
You going in to raise his hand?
Yes.
Yes.
No. All right. Yeah, clear as mud. All right, now we need a motion to...
Mr. President, I would move to approve ordinance 351023 as amended.
So was that... You said second? There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 35-10-23 as amended. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Air?
Nay.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Eight aye, one nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance number 40-10-23, an ordinance annexing approximately 27 acres north of East 196th Street and west of Hay Road, known as Retreat at Morse Plan Development in Noblesville Township, and Resolution RC-42-23, adopting a fiscal plan. Ms. Yelton?
Good evening. Development Services Manager in the Planning Department. As you may recall, this is approximately 27 acres to be annexed into the city. It's currently inside Noblesville Township. At this evening's meeting, we did advertise for a public hearing on the ordinance, and I'll discuss briefly the fiscal plan. As you may recall, the resolution RC-42-23 sets forth the analysis of the projected revenues and expenditures and a description of services that will be provided by the city once it is annexed. Those services include non-capital services as well as capital services. Non-capital services would include such things as police, fire, street, parks. And capital services, again, are those items such as sewer and water and those type. Again, currently, this piece of property is vacant. They are currently working on the site, doing... Starting to install infrastructure. There is a pre-development assessed value of approximately $1 million. Eventually, at total buildout, based on today's projections, that post-assessed development value would be approximately $32 million. Again, projected revenues for this site are well above what the projected expenditures would be. Construction of these homes would begin sometime either first quarter or second quarter of Based on that, we would ask that... I would ask if you have any questions on their fiscal analysis plan. If not, we would ask for a vote on that this evening, and then we will return after the public hearing on the ordinance at your next meeting in two weeks.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton? Not, I will go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number 40-10-23.
Seeing no one coming forward, I've moved to close the public hearing for ordinance 401023.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing for ordinance number 40-10-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know.
Mr. President, I would move to approve ordinance RC-4223.
Resolution.
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 Resolution. Order... RC-4223.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-42-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Council to consider ordinance number 41-10-23, an ordinance annexing approximately 58 acres west of Oleo Road and south of East 166th Street, known as Finch Creek Plan Development in Wayne Township, and Resolution RC-43-23, adopting a fiscal plan. Ms. Yelton?
Basically, this is the same situation, just on the opposite side of the city. This is actually in Wayne Township. It does contain approximately 58 acres. It is a part of the overall Finch Creek development, which is basically bounded by 156th Street, 166th Street, Bowden Road, and what is Oleo Road. Most... The majority of the 603 acres that is part of the development of Finch Creek was annexed back in 2018. There's approximately 100 acres that was on along Bowden Road here that got annexed back in 2014. At the time that we annexed this in 2018, this particular piece of property was not a part of that development. Again, it is a vacant piece of property. It is used agriculturally. Future development of this will contain approximately 1,800 residential units, and there will be approximately 10,000 square feet of neighborhood commercial when it is completed. It is a seven-to-10-year project. Again, based on the area of development, this particular area... This particular area here would most likely remain vacant for at least five years, because in starting their development, they will start down here along 146th Street and kind of move north and maybe do some of the development along this area initially. Again, construction is projected to basically begin sometime in 2024, 2025. That's infrastructure. And then once that is basically completed or gets to a point where they can pull building permits, they will do so the following years. Again, the obviously assessed value of this, you know, upon completion is going to be way more than the 121,000 it is today. Again, I said construction would begin here, you know, in 2024 with infrastructure. After the public hearing, again, I will return in two weeks to ask for adoption of this ordinance.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton?
So this is being annexed as part of the existing PD? This is not a special... This is something we've already seen? This is just an expansion of the PD?
That is correct. That is correct. This was actually presented in part of that PD. Once it comes into the city, the zoning basically will already be in place as in our four PD up in this particular area.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Yelton? Not, I will go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number 41-10-23.
Mr. President?
Mr. O'Connor?
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I'd move to close the public hearing on ordinance 41-10-23.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing for ordinance number 41-10-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know.
Mr. President, I would move to approve resolution RC-4323.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-43-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Council to consider ordinance number 43-10-23, an ordinance amending rates and charges for water treatment companies for the use and services rendered by the City of Noblesville, Indiana Sewage Works.
Honorable members of the council, Mr. President, Jonathan Murgau with Noblesville Utilities, here to request amendment to the existing rates and charges for the sewer rates. Just to be clear, for anyone who might be in the room, I know sewer rates and charges hits all Noblesville residents. This amendment will not change any rates for any existing residential, commercial, or industrial customers, either existing or future, unless you are in a special class that has been recognized, which is if you are a water treatment company. And the reason is, our existing rates for commercial and industrial users are based on water meter and water usage. Water treatment plants do not have water meters. They are not consumers of water, but they are prolific, dare I say, producers of wastewater. Therefore, this is a new rate that charges, we believe, based on an analysis we have done, fair rates and charges to two customers, that is Citizens Energy Group and Indiana American Water.
Any questions for Mr. Murgau?
I just agree, does it have to go through the IRC or anything like that?
No, it does not.
No. Any other questions?
Just a comment.
Yep.
I think you've done a nice job putting this together. This has been something that probably hadn't been done a while back, but with the amount of water that the tree has certainly appropriated, so good job on getting this all put together.
Thank you, council.
Yelton's work. Okay, I will go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance number 43-10-23.
Seeing no one coming forward, Mr. President, I would move that we close the public hearing for ordinance 431023.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing for ordinance number 43-10-23. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know.
Mr. President, I move to approve ordinance 431023.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 43-10-23. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you, council.
Council to consider ordinance number 44-10-23, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance Number 62-12-95 regarding Article IV, Article V, Article VIII, and Appendix B regarding Procedures and Submittals. Ms. Reed?
Good evening again. Ms. Ashelman goes on vacation, and I get to do these things for her, so a shout out to her in Hawaii on a beach somewhere while we're here tonight, so. This is a series of Unified Development Ordinance updates resulting from our process improvement review that we conducted earlier this year. That review was done with planning, engineering, economic development, and the mayor's office representatives in order to streamline and be a little bit more clear in our processes for approval for subdivisions, commercial buildings, and really mixed-use developments, including economic development incentivized projects. These modifications that are before you tonight are our first round of UDO amendments, and they include mostly changes for timelines, information requirements for filing a petition in the form of a checklist to be more clear and transparent, and really just clarifying some additional language in some engineering-related sections regarding those items that we need in order to have a petition filed and put on a docket. This comes before you with a unanimous favorable recommendation from Plan Commission, and I'm hopefully able to answer any questions you might have, and hopefully you don't have any. This is the second reading.
Any questions for Ms. Reed?
No, I was going to say...
Since Denise is not here, you still get credit for presenting this, so.
That's right.
This is a lot of work, and I also appreciate the hard work of combing through those documents.
Yes. I give Denise all the credit for this.
I would move to make a motion for ordinance 441023.
Second?
There's a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 4410-23. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
New ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 49-11-23, an ordinance amending ordinance number 16-5-99 regarding an updated preliminary development plan in clarification of existing text for Stony Creek Estates slash Stony Creek Farm Plan Development in the 1,1,300... Just 1,1,700 block of East State Route 38 South Side.
Moved into...
Second?
Yep. Now, Ms. Yelton.
Thank you. Back in 1999, the area that was outlined in blue was basically used for the Stony Creek Farms area, and then the Stony Creek Estates basically is the residential portion of it that has been developed. This proposed ordinance before you basically does two things. It amends the preliminary development plan that was in the original ordinance for Stony Creek Farms and basically updates it to include the Agape therapeutic riding. As you can see, they are proposing several, I'm going to say Barnes, riding arenas, you know, parking for all of the individuals that they basically help through this type of facility. The Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on this. The other thing this ordinance does, let me back up just a minute, is clarify some of the language that was in the original ordinance. There was conflicting statements in the ordinance regarding the zoning of the property. In one place, it said it was zone mixed PD. We've never had a zoning classification of MPD. And then, as you went back further in the ordinance, it set aside areas that were zoned, both PB and I1. Well, it's not zoned both PB and I1. It is either PB or it's I1. So basically, we have cleaned up this, I'm going to say, the actual zoning districts for this particular area, and then again included this preliminary site plan for adoption for the Agape therapeutic riding. Again, the Plan Commission did hold a public hearing on this at their October meeting, and it was sent forward to the council with a favorable recommendation of for adoption by 11-0-0 vote.
Any questions for Ms. Yelton?
This property is not annexed, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
This project is not annexed, is that correct?
Correct.
No. Well, the...
Stony Creek is, but...
The neighborhood is, but...
The neighborhood is.
I don't know if Stony Creek's... I don't remember if Stony Creek Farms.
I don't know if it's annexed.
Ms. Yelton, it's...
I know. I'm like... No, okay.
Nice work, Darren.
Let me just say, it is annexed.
It's one of the happiest days of my life.
It is annexed in the city. It is in the city. Yeah, I'm positive. What is not in the city is the residential property to the east of Stony Creek Estates. That is not inside the city limits. [Laughter]
So Agape is approved use, so if this ever is not Agape, do they have to come back in, or are there other approved uses?
So this particular piece of property is currently zoned, I'm going to say PB. The blue would be zone PB. The pink or the red color over here is basically either R1, R3, or R4, depending on what was built there. PB would allow for any type of uses. The problem you get into is we've got a preliminary development plan that basically shows the Agape use. If some other type of PB use was to go in there, they would have to come back and amend the plan. And that would be a public hearing before both the Plan Commission and then ultimately here at the council.
My only comment is horses are not traditionally allowed in our PB zoning, is that correct? Or even in the city limits within certain distances and things like that. That's why I was asking if it's annexed. And I just want to make sure this doesn't...
We're not having a war here. We're getting along.
I just want to make sure...
Am I not... Is that part not annexed?
Aren't we allowed to have horses on the downtown square, but we're not allowed to have pigs?
It's chickens.
You've got to ask Evelyn, those are her ordinances.
There's like some old ordinances that we never did end up cleaning up that's...
You can't spit on the sidewalk either.
That it did allow some farm animals and did not some. That it did allow some farm animals, it did not some.
I, I just want to make sure that if we're going to approve this, we aren't violating our livestock ordinance.
It's not in the city limits.
It's not inside, that particular, so the outlined blue area is not inside the city limits. The pink or red area is inside the city limits.
Yep.
Okay, just for clarity, Joyce Anne was wrong, right?
Yes.
I didn't say it was wrong.
I just want to clarify.
Joyce Anne, Joyce Anne stands corrected this evening.
So, a portion of this is gonna be residential?
It already is residential. It is Stony Creek Estates.
All right, but the blue area, none of that's gonna be residential?
No, this is all what was originally Stony Creek Farms.
And that's all gonna stay as gonna be this Agape?
And that would basically be used by Agape.
Okay, so we won't have any residential in this?
That is correct. The only residential, I'm gonna say, the only thing that might be is considered residential would be possibly a caretaker might live on the property to take care of all the horses. But other than that, no, there would be no residential on this property.
So, this project will not be, will not be annexed into the city of Noblesville?
Unless Agape wants water someday or sewer.
They were at Plan Commission.
But the sewer's gonna go through.
Yeah, I'm kinda surprised they weren't here, aren't here this evening.
If they wanted water in the sewer, we could already, so at that point in time...
Correct.
There's still all the ways to build their capital campaign.
Right, they're working on a capital campaign, so, you know, it may be a while before they come in for, you know, an actual construction of any building.
This approval is pretty tied to this, this plan vote, correct?
Yes.
To Darren's point, like if someone else bought this and weren't doing this exact same thing, they would have to come back in for more approvals to different things. So, it's tied to this plan.
And residential is not part of what we're approving?
Correct.
Without, come back.
Just one caretaker's house.
Okay.
If there is one in the future.
Any other questions?
No way.
This has been fun. Okay, we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
Excellent.
Counsel to consider ordinance number 50-11-23, an ordinance amending ordinance number 4-2-23
regarding Exhibit E prohibited use chart for the Midland Point Plan Development south of State Route 32 and east of Hazel Falls Road.
Moved to introduce ordinance 50-11-23.
Second.
Ms. Yelton.
This basically is a proposed amendment to what is known as the Midland Point Mixed Use Plan Development. As you may recall, the area that is outlined in the red is basically commercial uses. The area that is in the blue is basically for apartments or townhomes. Basically, this amendment would allow one principal business related to the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption off premises to be located in an in-line tenant building. It could not be a standalone building, but would have to be in an in-line tenant building. The Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at their October meeting. There were a few individuals, I want to say three, maybe four individuals, that spoke on the matter, but the Plan Commission did send a favorable recommendation for adoption of this amendment to the council with an 11-0-0 vote.
Any, any questions for Ms. Yelton? Great, thank you.
I know you're sending to the...
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel to consider resolution RC-47-23, a resolution approving a transfer of property for Pleasant Street, Phase Two. Ms. Krupski.
I'll just waddle my way out there.
You just really want to sit through this whole meeting.
I did, I'm so hungry, pregnant.
Need some pickles?
In front of you is a transfer, property transfer resolution. We did discuss it at our October 24th exec session. Since that time, we have made a few changes to the resolution, but in general, for Pleasant Street Phase Two, we are widening to the north, so the Noblesville Baptist Church is impacted by that. Their parking lot will need to be redesigned as a part of that, and because of that, we'll be taking some of their amenity space away. So, where they host their, some of their church services and outdoor events will now be taken away for parking. As a part of our negotiations with them, and we've had many long conversations with them, we did determine that the city's parcels that they own at the corner of 13th and Pleasant that we would transfer them over to the church in order to make up for that green space that they are losing. As a part of our conversations, we did add to the resolution the condition that all three parcels will be platted together as one parcel, so that has been added as a condition of approval in the resolution. And, yeah, I will, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I recommend you approve the resolution.
I appreciate that you did this as a replat instead of just commitments. I think that's much more comfortable. So, with that, yeah, sorry.
The property on the very south edge, the one we own right on the corner of 13th and Pleasant?
The northeast corner.
The northeast corner.
Yeah.
We're not giving that whole property up correctly.
Yeah, it is, although, it's the remnant that is not needed for the project.
Right.
Good clarification, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, so the total fiscal impact is what, $55,000? Is that what I read?
That is what the appraised value of the parcel was, yes.
Okay.
There are other pieces to that with the negotiation, but that did bring down our total cost by that amount.
Mr. President, I would move to amend resolution RC-47-23 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to amend resolution RC-47-23 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know.
Mr. President?
Ms. Wiles?
I would move that we approve resolution RC-47-23 as amended.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-47-23 as amended. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Lanius, number two, counsel to consider resolution RC-51-23, a resolution recognizing certain employees of the City of Noblesville. Mr. O'Connor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution is just a recognition of the service that's been provided to the city by a number of different employees, and we just want, I wanted to read this into the record, because we've got some folks that have been here 20, 25 years, have dedicated their working life to the taxpayers, and I just thought it'd be good to acknowledge their work and their effort, so that's it.
Awesome. Mr. President, I would move to approve resolution RC-51-23 and have those names entered into the record.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve resolution RC-51-23 and have the names entered into the record. This is a hand vote. All those in favor raise your right hand. I know. Counsel comments. We are adjourned.